Good evening. We're going to call this workshop session of Lewisville City Council to order. We do have a quorum. We'll go ahead and go through Item A, which is Discussion and Consent Regular Agenda Items, and then we'll move into Lead and Copper Rule Workshop Presentation. Ronnie, I've got you for invocation, and I'm doing the pledges. And we do have closed session this evening. So, Item C-1, Public Hearing, Zoning Ordinance for Lady Tessia and Essex Boulevard.
Mayor and Council, on this one, you would open the public hearing if there's anyone in the audience that wants to make comment, they can make comment. There was a request from the developer to hold it until, or to table it, continue it until the next date for public hearing, which is September 16th. The staff is in support. They've had a public meeting, sorry, they've had a community meeting, not a public meeting, and they're trying to take into account the items that the neighborhood brought up.
Liz, would it be all right to just recommend folks not, or do we have, since it's an open public meeting continuation, they have, if they want to speak?
Yeah, they are.
Questions on that?
Just for, so everyone knows, I was at that meeting, at least for the person that I was very well attended, probably 50 people there. Richard, if he's...
He's out of town, but Michelle's here.
Richard, you all did a great job out there. Thank you for helping fill in and make sure things stayed straight. It was a really good meeting.
You might want to make that point, because I know I got an email stating that certain folks didn't get informed, so it made me think maybe it was a limited amount.
I'll make that clear.
So, that would be great. Item 2, Public Hearing, Consideration of Ordinance granting Special Use Permit for Manufacturing Medium Intensity for Multi-Quip. I just love the name, it's like lots of jokes. Item 3, Public Hearing, Ordinance Adopting the Fiscal Year 24/25 Operating Budget. Questions or comments on that? Consent Agenda. Item 4, Approval of Minutes. Item 5, Temporary Construction and License and Mowing Agreement. Item 6, Economic Development Agreement with the City and T S M A. Item 7, Second Amendment to the Interlocal Agreement with the City of Lewisville, Flower Mountain, and Highland Village. That is for the fire training facility.
And the Fire Training Tower, just an update, is going well, and they're on track after we got through the water penetration issue that we had out there. And I'm happy to describe what that issue was now. We can talk about it later.
Yeah, okay.
That's why we can talk about it there.
Okay.
If we talk about it out there, we'd have to pull it from...
Oh, yeah.
Oh, is that consent?
Not consent.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, so basically, the water penetration issue, just to make sure that it's on the record, we had hired a firm to build, to construct the project. We also had a third-party geotechnical firm that comes in and basically tests groundwater levels, that type of thing. All initial tests using all the normal procedures showed that groundwater was basically normal in the area, wasn't anything you had to take drastic steps to remediate or deal with. In removing the soil from the property, just as any type of water body does, it finds the easiest path of least resistance. And so, once we removed that soil, the water, we believe there was groundwater that was running alongside, likely, running alongside of a water pipe that was nearby, and that penetrated the dig site, which then filled up to be like a swimming pool. And so, the next step on that was we had to get a de-watering system in there. Luckily, we have teams that have worked in Florida, and so they know how to de-water areas. They did that. It took a significant amount of time and labor, money, but it is resolved, and we've continued on. We had to do a change order to be able to address those additional costs related to that. This is to spread that additional cost, which we've already accounted for in our contracts with our contractor, but this is to spread that cost amongst the three entities that are party to building this fire training tower, which is Highland Village, as well as Flower Mountain, and they've agreed to that.
And I appreciate the scope of this, letting you know this is consent. Can we go back to 6 real quick?
Sure.
So, we're talking, this is for, this is Sullivan, for Terry's place over there. I know this is really common for us to do for Old Town. Can you give us a couple examples of other folks that have gotten grant money for a facade?
Sure, so facade grant program allows for a maximum of up to $40,000 of your, I think it's a 50%, is Marishal here?
Yes.
50%?
50% with a max of $40,000.
Yeah, of $40,000. We've had many, our entire downtown is what it is facade-wise because of this grant program, so there are a multitude of different businesses that have taken advantage of this. A good example that has been recent was Sparrow took advantage of this, I believe. Some of the bridal boutique folks have taken advantage of that, really up and down. Kelly Stokes' property in Old Town has done that as well. So, this is a common grant, and it's a pretty standard process that we have, we go through, and we make available to any of those businesses.
And we've done modified versions of it to other facilities that aren't in Old Town, so like the plaza across the street from LHS. We did a modified grant program for their, to redo their facades.
And we've also had one that did this and then sold the property, and they had to pay back.
Yeah, I remember talking about that.
Yeah.
The other thing, though, on this that does make this different is there is a $40,000 cash grant in addition to that facade grant, but that is related to the park that's going to be built next door, and it's their requirement to activate the park as well as to do general maintenance of it in perpetuity.
So, how does he get the $40,000 on that? So, does he, the first year he plays the sixth of the ninth?
Yeah, so, Marishal, what is that?
So, he will be eligible for that grant once they've substantially completed the facade improvements, and they've executed and filed the license and maintenance agreement that will then, they'll have to file, and it will require them to then maintain the park and to have yearly events in the park.
So, we'll have a separate license agreement that sets all those rules out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any others before 8? We'll go back to...
Real quick, I need to think about this just now, but that he sells, does that responsibly go to the owner of the property if he sells his place?
I'm going to have to pass that off to Marishal as well. If he sells the property, does it automatically go to the new buyer, or does it, will we have to renegotiate it at that point?
So, we have a clawback for that plus a minimum of five years, and so if he sells during that time, it's going to be repayment on a pro rata basis.
He sells after five years, that would come back over to the city?
I'm sorry?
If he sells after five years, that goes back to the city?
No, if he, he has to operate it for a minimum of five years, and if he sells within that five years, he has to repay a portion of that.
After the five years, so what happens after the five years?
After the five years, it's, there's nothing requiring after the five years.
Were you talking about the maintenance so in perpetuity?
I'm talking about the park, yeah.
Does that transfer?
Yeah.
Yeah, so it is our part, and it is going to be for a minimum of the five years.
So, if he sells in year six?
Yes.
We would take that part back over again potentially?
Yes.
Or renegotiate with the new owners?
Right, and so the discussion was if, going forward, they were to move, then we then negotiated what the minimum term would look like if they were to sell, and for instance, if the owner did not want to provide that funding. And so, we ended up at the $40,000 for a minimum of the five years, which I think is roughly like $8,000 a year or so. And so, that's the portion that they would be required to pay back.
And just to make clear, although the maintenance is like general cleanup, our team is still responsible for, like if there's infrastructure issues out there, benches are, you know, falling apart, we would need to replace them, so.
We'll go ahead and move on to Item 9.
Yeah, we did. So, okay, I missed eight.
Oh, sorry, I skipped eight. No, I had it in my head. Sorry about that. So, yeah, Item 8, Multiple Pedestrian Bridges Replacement for Echo Park, Fitness Park, Train Park.
Anybody that might be listening from Castle Hills, Echo Park, also known generally as Teardrop Park, says why don't they have the same park out there in Castle Hills? But I think Echo Park is the official name for it, but we call it Teardrop Park just because somebody called it that once upon a time, so.
I've seen that on a larger league in the area where people change the name. Anything else on 8? Item 9, Interlocal Cooperation Between the City and DPS for Outstanding Fines. Item 10, Second Amendment to the Agreement Between the City of Lewisville and TBG Partners for Trail Design. Item 11, Bid Award for Whipperwell Lift Station Electrical Improvement Project.
Once this is done, is there anything beyond that that's going to have to be done at Whipperwell?
Lift station, no, outside of a standard pump replacement, that may have to happen between that time and, you know, whatever. Are there any planned replacements? No, they're not.
Item 12, License Agreement Between the City and R O Properties. Item 13, Resolution Authorizing Addition Up to Three Firefighter Positions, Two Police Officer Positions, One Detention Officer Position, and One Public Safety Dispatcher. These are those overfilled positions that we allow every year. Item 14, Approval of Resolution Ratifying Property Tax Increase Reflected in the 24/25 Operating Budget. Liz, is there, oh, this is consent, there's no specific language, okay. 15, Approval of Resolution Authorizing City Manager to Enter Into an Interlocal Agreement with Texas, Texas dot for Gateway Signage. Item 16, Regular Hearing, Two Alternative Standards With Window On and Can't Be Requirements For Retail Store or Shop, North Side of Justin Road, 407. That's the Specks Wine Building. Questions or comments? Item 17, Regular Hearing. This is the negotiated settlement between Atmos and the city, and this is recommended approval.
How often do we have to do this?
Every year.
Every year.
Jan, is that right? I think I saw Jan rug in here.
Nope. Miss, let me see her.
Sorry, I saw her.
She's on the hall.
Yeah, she must be on the hall. All right, then we go to reports, city council staff reports, 24 bond sale, quarterly investment report, and we do have multiple items for closed session tonight.
Yes, definitely.
All right, there are no other questions regarding the agenda. We'll go ahead and move on to workshop session. Item D, Lead and Copper Rule Workshop. We have our Utilities Manager, Caitlin Heron, to present the PowerPoint.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Thank you for this opportunity to come talk to you about EPA's Lead and Copper Rule revisions, and what we're doing to make sure that we are in compliance with the rule. So, before I get into this, I will say, I have been through about two and a half years of webcasts, webinars, conferences, lunch and learns with the EPA and the TCU to break down this rule. It is very dense, so we've tried to make this as user-friendly as possible with this presentation, but I will preface this with I live in acronym land, so if I start going off, and you have any questions, please let me know. So, we'll go into a historical rule overview, what we've been doing historically, and then what we're going to be doing to be, or what we have done to be in compliance with the revisions, a timeline as an overview, some speculation, because as I mentioned, this is very dense. Just as soon as they promulgated the rule, they announced that they will have lead and copper rule improvements that will be promulgated as well, so we're expecting those any day now to be in effect in 2027, and then some school and childcare sampling. So, the lead and copper rule was established by the EPA in 1991 originally. I know everybody's probably heard about the Flint, Michigan, lead in the water crisis, so that is what led to the lead and copper rule revisions being promulgated in 2021. So, that essentially was ruled that there is no safe amount of lead in the drinking water, so the overarching goal is get the lead out. So, that's where this is leading. So, as I mentioned, L C R I, the rule improvements are going into effect in 2027, and then also in 2027, another big thing that's kind of hit the news is PFOS. So, the PFOS regulations, those were promulgated earlier this year, and those will go into effect the same year as the improvements do. So, we have been in compliance with this rule. We've been testing houses every three years since 1993, so in data that's available currently on Texas Drinking Water Watch, so essentially since 2005, we've done 365 homeowner samples, and only one has ever, one home, one sample from that home has ever exceeded the action level of .015 milligrams per liter. As a city, we have never violated the lead and copper rule, either in reporting violation or sampling violation, so, I'm sorry, I'm probably blocking that. So, because we have not had any violations, we are under reduced monitoring, so your monitoring is based on your city's population as well as your compliance history, so we only have to sample 50 samples every three years. So, what's coming? What's new? So, I will say, the biggest part of this is the lead service line inventory, and this is rather unprecedented as far as a rule goes, because they are requiring, typically when a rule from the EPA or TCU comes out, they're focused on the public side. This rule actually is requiring us to inventory not only our public side service line, but the private side as well. So, essentially, from the main to the meter, that service line for our side, and then from the meter to the house for the public, sorry, private side. This does not get into the home plumbing within the home, just that service line leading up to the house. So, the inventory must include the four categories of what material type could be: non-led, lead, galvanized, requiring replacement, and what that is, is a galvanized line that has either been in contact with currently or previously in contact with lead or downstream of lead, because the properties of galvanized pipe will take on metals as they leach, so it could also then leach lead, so they're essentially treating those as a lead line and then unknown. So, on October 16th, we will have to submit this lead service line inventory to the state as well as have a public-facing map so residents can go get on, look up their house, and see what they have. So, also with that inventory, we'll send out notice to any residents with lead, galvanized requiring replacement, or unknowns in 30 days of that inventory being posted, and then the 24-hour notice of any action level exceedances. That's when we do sampling if we were to have an action level exceedance. We won't have to worry about that for three years, because we just in June did our 50 samples, so we're on that three-year basis, so we won't do it again for a while. So, this is our map as it stands today. We're still working on finishing it up, but I have to give a huge shout. So, this has not just been the efforts of public services, largely, honestly, G I S and I T S have put a huge leg on this with records review, getting this inventory ready to go. The library and building services helped me track down some old plumbing codes to try to figure out when can we say that we banned lead in the system. So, this has been a two-year, multi-departmental effort. The Lewisville Ordinance removed lead from the public lines in February of 1970, so anything newer than 1970 we know is non-led. On the private side, the city adopted the 1988 Uniform Plumbing Code in February of 1989, so any homes newer than 1989, we know don't have lead lines either. So, currently, we have 633 unknown public side lines and about 10,500 unknown private side lines, and through records review, we have no lead or galvanized requiring replacement lines. So, those unknowns are still working on those, but so far, so far so good. So, residents with those unknown lines will get a letter from us within 30 days of October 16th. The notice will include language that an unknown line might be lead, because we don't know, EPA again, is essentially treating it as if it's lead, so they will get that language in there that it might be lead. It'll have how to identify the service line material on their side, the health effects of blood, steps to reduce lead in drinking water, how to get their child's blood tested if they're concerned about that for lead levels in the blood. But, excuse me, about three weeks ago, when city council approved the AMI contract, part of this is when they're doing that register swap, they're going to be on those, we gave them the list of unknowns already, and so they're going to dig back the public side and the private side and identify the material type. So, they got started, they hit the ground running. As of last week, they'd already run 2,000 of those 10,000, so we'd had them start with the unknowns first so that we can get this done as quickly as possible. So, again, just as a recap, the original rule is 1991. The new rule was promulgated in 2021. We are going to be in compliance October 16th of this year, and that lead service line will be submitted to the state as well as it being publicly available. We're planning on doing a utility bill, either an insert or that little comment area, we'll put a link to the website for residents to get to that map, as well as social media and a banner on the webpage. Then, by November 14th, those residents with unknown lines should get that letter from us, and then we'll be working towards compliance with the lead and copper rule improvements when we know more about what's coming. Some speculation, so we know generally what will be included, we just don't really know the scope, but we do know there will be a lead, sorry, there will be a school and daycare, childcare testing requirement, and that will be on us to be responsible that it gets done, but not necessarily, there are tools, and we'll talk about that, that schools have and that they can use. We'll be lowering the action level to .010 milligrams per liter from that .015 that it is currently, and again, like I said, the goal is to get the lead out, so they will be requiring 100% removal of lead and galvanized requiring replacement within 10 years. So, all cities across the country will have to get rid of the lead lines, public and private side, and we haven't quite worked out that part with the legality of changing out private side, but that will be explained here when that comes out. And then, improve public education requirements, so essentially, that's both content and frequency of those educations. What might be included is, while the inventory currently was just service line material, they may include goosnecks and connectors. So, a gooseneck is that, it looks like a little gooseneck, it goes from the main to the service line, and the, any connector that connects the two, the service line pieces. Unfortunately, those weren't necessarily included in the lead bans when those happened, because those could have a higher percentage potentially, so they're going to require those to be inventoried as well, that like in private side. An inventory validation of a percentage of your non-led line, so since the inventory was, the only requirement was to do a records review, they didn't require us to go dig. So, they will, they will require a percentage of field verification to make sure that the field matches what the records say. And then, improve tap sampling with first and fifth leader samples. So, this is for our residents that do the homeowner sampling for us, so currently, we send them a bottle, they have to let their water sit for at least six hours, so it's a first draw sample, but no more than, I think it's 13, and then they take that sample, send it to us, and we send it off to be tested. It's possible that they'll require a first and fifth leader, which means a resident will get five bottles, same stagnation period of that six hours, and then they'll have to fill them up in order so that the first and fifth can be sampled, so essentially, how things break down is it sits, and then how the water looks as it's been flowing for a while is essentially what they're wanting to test. And then, a follow-up sample if any samples come out above that .010. And last but not least, if you go on the TCUQ's website and you search lead testing in schools, you'll come to this page. So, this is a grant-funded program that the TCUQ has done, so schools for free, public schools, public and private childcare and daycares can be a part of this program and sign up and get testing kits and resources and things for their school. So, I met with, I was at a conference in August, and I met the lead of this program, and she did confirm that L I S D has already signed up and got all their schools tested in June of this year. So, the nice thing about this is if they sign up for this, it's free to them, and it counts towards our compliance with the lead and copper rule improvements as well. So, you can, if you want to nominate your school's childcare facility, there's a nominate facility, you can look up sample results, and we're really, so we're going to get a list of all the registered facilities in town and nominate them through this program, because it really is a good program. They're fully staffed, they have a hotline, so parents and teachers and people can call and ask questions, and that will be available, so we're really trying to push, push them using this program. So, with that, I talked really fast, but if you have any questions.
Made it happen, thank you. Any questions from council? Very fortuitous that we're doing, doing the replacements, makes it, makes it pretty good, so thank you for that.
Thank you.
All right, we have no further material to cover in the workshop. We will take a pause and return at 7 o'clock for regular session. It's aged like a fine wine. Good evening, it's 7 o'clock, and we're going to call this meeting of the Lewisville City Council to order. We do have a quorum. First up on the agenda tonight is invocation with Deputy Mayor Pro Tem Ronnie Cade.
Please join me in prayer. Dear Father God, give us the grace and discernment as we deliberate before you tonight to always do what is best for the city of Lewisville and its residents. In today's trying times, I ask that you grant us some peace, Lord, and just for 24 hours, quiet the world. In your name I pray. Amen.
Please join me in the pledges to our flags.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
All right, first up on tonight's agenda, we have closed session in accordance with Texas Government Code, Subchapter D, Section 551.071, Consultation with Attorney, Legal Issues Related to the Fair Housing Act, 42 U.S.C., Section 3601, etc., and approved variances to Chapter 3, Animals, Article 3, Division 2, Section 3, 85, Same Agricultural Animals, Article 5, Section 3, 151, Restricted Premise, and Article 6, Section 3, 156, Location Number and Types of Chickens Allowed at 1292, Marchant Place, Section 551.072, Real Estate Property Acquisition, Session 551.087, Economic Development Deliberation Regarding Economic Development Negotiations. We will be moving into closed session. We're going to reconvene back into regular session. We do not have any actions to be taken on items discussion in closed session. We'll go ahead and move into Item C, Public Hearing. Item C-1, Continued Public Hearing, Consideration of Ordinance Amending the Zoning Ordinance by Amending Ordinance Number 0428-22-ZON to Rezone Approximately 10.207 Acres Located in Northeast Corner of Lady Tesla Avenue and Essex Boulevard, Legally Described as 10.207 Acres Out of the Amos Singleton Survey, Abstract 1138, from Plan Development Multifamily III District to Plan Development Townhouse II District to amend the plan development concept plan set forth in Exhibit 5B, the Realm Subdistrict Concept Plan thereto by amending, the concept plan for 50.562 acres located north of Lady Tesla Avenue, legally described as 50.562 acres out of the Amos Singleton Survey, Abstract 1138, and the Benjamin Shunover Survey, Abstract 1209, as requested by Patricia Phant of McAdams on behalf of Eric Stanley of Breko Land CH LLC, the property owner, case number 24-04-2-PZ. The city council opened the public hearing for this item on August 19th, 2024, and continued the public hearing to the September 9th, 2024 city council meeting. The applicant has requested that the public hearing be continued to the September 16th, 2024 city council meeting to provide additional time to update the proposed concept plan to reflect the details discussed at the Community Neighborhood Meeting hosted by applicant on Wednesday, September 4th, 2024. On January 3rd, 2022, the city council adopted the Castle Hills Plan Development District Ordinance Number 0428-22-ZON, then incorporated all provisions of the Castle Hills Development Agreement along with the variances to the agreement approved since 1996. The P D allows changes to base zoning districts and the sub-district concept plans following the zoning processes in the Unified Development Code. The applicant is requesting to change the base zoning district on 10.207 acres from Plan Development Multifamily III, District to Plan Development Townhouse II, District to allow for a front-entry townhome community where multifamily development had originally been planned. The proposed changes also necessitate an amendment to the approved concept plan. The concept plan for the Realm South Subdistrict is amended, is being amended in its entirety. However, the changes only impact 50.562 acres, which include the 10.207 acres proposed for rezoning. The proposed concept plan amendment consists of the addition of the proposed townhomes along with the reconfiguration of the remaining multifamily units. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval unanimously 5 to 0 on August 6th, 2024. It is recommended that the city council continue the public hearing to the September 16th, 2024 city council meeting. Michelle Berry, our Planning Manager, is available for questions, and the public meeting is now open. Just so abridged, if anybody is here to speak, you are, of course, welcome to speak tonight. However, that has been requested that this be pushed to the 16th to create any changes that were based off of the community meeting that was held, so if you're going to speak tonight, understand that we're going to, council's going to have a motion to potentially keep this open until the 16th, in which case, there will be a public meeting then as well that you can continue to speak at. So, I do have a request to speak from Daniel Young, if you would like to speak, Daniel? If you would like to speak, Daniel. And if you would state your name and address for the record, please, sir. Thank you.
Good evening, council. Daniel Young, 733 Lady Tesla Avenue, Lewisville. Thank you for allowing me to speak about this. I'd just like to give a little bit of an update of the meeting that we had with Mr. Stanley last week. So there was quite a bit of a showing at the meeting. So basically what had, came of that, we started the meeting as in he was asking, well, telling us that he was informing us, that the goal was to inform us is what the beginning of the meeting started as, that he is offering 50 feet. I believe 40 feet is what we heard previously, but 40, 50 feet is what he has offered as the compromise. But I believe, I spoke, still speaking with many of our neighbors, we kind of feel that this is not enough as the previous proposal shows. 200 is the distance, which including the street would be about 300 from our doorstep. You know, obviously this plan is, can change at any moment. So, you know, he has even said that it can change up to five feet. That's what's within his ability to do. So I'm asking that we don't approve still unless, you know, he can meet with us again and offer something greater, hopefully maybe 75 or something like that. But, and still to this day, they still have not shown the traffic study. It's just pretty much saying that yes, it's been done, but we can't find it. So this traffic study has become mythical at this point. And so I'm asking that that's made available to us before any decisions made, since this traffic study still has not been materialized at all. So yeah, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. And I did hear that there was a good number of turnout.
Yeah, Mayor, I was there for the first half hour before I had to leave for another obligation. There's probably, Mr. Young, probably 50 people there, Mr. Young? Probably, probably 50 people. Yeah, Eric presented. I think that meeting went on for nearly three hours. So lots of good involvement, but it was, it was a productive meeting, I think, and lots of information conveyed, but I think they did a good job informing the residents what their plans were.
City Secretary, do we have any other requests for comment? All right. Counsel, if there are no other comments or questions, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing.
I have a motion and a second. Counsel, please vote. Oh. So I've got this set as a, as a motion and then a motion to, so you just gave me two options, right? You didn't give me one, then the other.
I apologize, Mayor.
I'm reading this in our normal cadence of close and then, so it's my fault. I'm reading it wrong. So we need to, we need to take that back because you want to do, we want to do a continuation to the 16th. So if I close it tonight, it's closed, closed. Right. Yeah, so we're not going to do that.
We withdraw the motion.
Yeah, so yeah, withdraw that motion if you don't mind. And I'll entertain a motion to continue the public hearing until September 16th.
Mayor, I move to continue the hearing till the 16th of September.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to continue the public hearing to September 16th. Counsel, if you'd please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Item 2, public hearing. Consideration of ordinance granting a special use permit for manufacturing medium intensity on approximately 5.1578 acres legally described as Lot 3 Block A Red River Business Park Edition located at 900 Arthur's Lane, Zone Light Industrial District, as requested by Angela Hunt Munch, Hart, Koff, and Har on behalf of Tyler Clements, Multiquip Incorporated, the tenant, and Arthur's Lane Business Park LLC, the property owner, case number 28 dash, or 24-08-13-SUP. Multiquip Incorporated is a manufacturer and supplier of products related to light and medium construction equipment. The manufacturing process at the 900 Arthur's Lane facility involves welding preformed metal sheet parts and powder coating metal frames. This use is considered manufacturing medium intensity, which requires approval of a special use permit. The use is compatible with surrounding uses and contributes to the big move of economic vitality outlined in the Lewisville 2025 Vision Plan. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended unanimous approval 6 to nothing on August 20th, 2024. It is recommended that the city council approve the ordinances set forth in the caption above. We do have Michelle Berry, our planning manager, available for questions. And the public hearing on this is now open. City Secretary, do we have any public comment?
No, sir, we sure don't.
All right. Counsel, if there are any questions or comments?
I just wanted to make one, one clarification that this is an existing building that a tenant is, is moving in for a tenant finish out. Correct. Okay.
Great.
With that, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Counsel, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Counsel, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Move to approve the ordinances set forth in the caption.
Second.
City Attorney.
This is an ordinance of the Lewisville City Council amending the zoning ordinance by granting a special use permit for manufacturing medium intensity on approximately 5.1578 acres legally described as Lot 3 Block A Red River Business Park located at 900 Arthur's Lane and Zone Light Industrial LI District, providing for repealer severability, a penalty, and an effective date declaring an emergency.
Counsel, if you'd please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Item 3, public hearing. Consideration of ordinance adopting the fiscal year 2024, 2025 operating budget. In accordance with state law and the city charter, a public hearing is being held on the proposed fiscal year 2024, 25 budget, available on the city's website and the city manager's office and is filed with the city secretary's office to provide an opportunity for resident input. The proposed budget includes changes made by the city council at the budget workshop held on August 10th, 2024. Texas Local Government Code, Section 102-007, requires city council to take action on the proposed budget at the conclusion of the public hearing. Approval of this ordinance adopts an operating budget for these funds beginning October 1, 2024 and ending September 30th, 2025. It's recommended that the city council approve the ordinances set forth in the caption above. The public hearing is now open. City Secretary, do we have any public comment?
No, sir, we have no one signed up.
All right. Counsel, if you have any comment? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. Counsel, if you'd please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Counsel, I'll entertain a motion to approve the ordinances set forth in the caption.
Motion to approve the ordinance is set forth in the caption.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. City Attorney.
This is an ordinance of the city council of the city of Lewisville, Texas, adopting and approving a budget for the city of Lewisville, Texas for the year beginning October 1, 2024 and ending September 30th, 2025, providing for an effective date declaring an emergency.
Counsel, if you'd please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Item D, visitor citizens forum. Speakers must address their comments to the mayor rather than to individual council members or staff. Speakers should speak clearly and state their name and address prior to beginning their remarks. Speakers will be allowed five minutes for testimony. Speakers making personal, impertinent, profane, or slanderous remarks may be removed from the meeting. Unauthorized remarks from the audience, stamping of feet, whistles, yells, clapping, and similar demonstrations will not be permitted. In accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, the city council is restricted from discussing or taking action on items not listed on the agenda. Action can only be taken in a future meeting. I do have some comment cards. It looks like Ms. Nancy Sansom. Name and address for the record, Nancy. Welcome back.
Welcome back. We're back here after long summer, hot summer, and we're delighted to be here and to be back again. My name is Nancy Sansom. I'm the coordinator and the spokesperson for the Lewisville Senior Living Challenges Organization, also known as Seniors United Helping Seniors. I've lived at 415 South Garden Ridge Boulevard since 2018. Several, several of our members will be speaking to you tonight on various concerns. You may have a packet in your possession that was passed to each of you. First, I'd like to thank Mayor Gilmore for his well-written priorities in the Lewisville Horizon paper. The mayor mentioned that he and the city are committed to increasing affordable housing options to ensure everyone can find a home in Lewisville. We really appreciate his support. As is known, there's considerable pressure in Lewisville and Denton County to provide not only an affordable housing, but also housing options for low and fixed income seniors in the state legislation in 2025. It's one of their top priorities. The rate that seniors are retiring is truly staggering. The number of us over 65 and older will increase from around 56 million to 79.2 million in 10 years, 2035. However, the ratio of senior housing new constructions is not keeping pace with the huge population growth. According to the Dallas Morning News last week, as many as nine out of 10 Texans are straining and struggling to pay their monthly mortgage and their house payment. Inflation is killing all of us. There is a statewide shortage of new building constructions and we need to construct at least 306,000 new homesites and multifamily units here in our area. Lewisville city manager Clara Powell and her team are to be congratulated for their work this year with the Heritage Estates Project at Enmans as a new senior living community. This is a tax credit program to build more units for low income and seniors over 65. Though this project will offer just 12 units out of 92 units for low income and income compromised seniors, that leaves thousands of us vulnerable to housing insecurity this year, and we love Lewisville and we want to be here, so we just need more help. Other states have dedicated more of their own funds to creating more affordable and low income housing, according to Mel C. Hadborn, president of the Dallas Housing Financial Corporation. So they're working in that direction. If we can just get our people working in that direction, that would really help us. If the state of Texas wants to get serious about solving housing affordability and quantity, increasing the funding for affordable housing and low income housing is a necessity, according to Adam Lambert, he's Dallas Neighborhood for Housing. The good news, according to the governor, is that the new January 2025 Texas Congress and legislation will focus on this, this crisis need for housing. Senator Ten Parker and others are leading with new legislation to help correct these shortages. We are also working to beautify Lewisville ourselves, our little group, with the cooperation of City Parks and Recreation, Chris Christensen, and our expert B. Keeper Jake Urick. This will help increase pollination of all of our many gardens, intersections, and outlying farm areas. To continue to beautify Evergreen, our management Churchill has agreed to allow us to build a wheelchair accessible garden for our residents that are in wheelchairs and would like to garden. And they have, Churchill has dedicated the land and the water for this use. In closing, we seniors appreciate the level of support and attention that you all have provided us in our attempt to continue to give voice to our dedicated seniors at Lewisville. We never give up. And thank you so much for your kind attention and support.
Thank you, Nancy. Welcome back, Joyce.
Thanks, sir.
Name and address for the record.
Joyce Fuel, 415 South Garden Ridge Boulevard. Do you need my apartment number?
You're good.
Okay. Lewisville. Did the timer start? Okay. Good evening, Mayor, city council members, fire personnel, coppers, Jesus, and Jake from State Farm, but I think he, I think Jake from State Farm just left. So you all know I'm a little goofy and I can't stay too serious. Even so, I wanted to begin on a more serious note. I know, you know, the price of everything has gone up and we seniors are struggling with no end in sight, or with what end in sight, maybe? That's the question. In the last two years, the rent has increased by $85 a month. Social Security gave a cost of living raise, but Medicare raised the monthly premium. So I kind of got a zero amount of raise. When I sign my new lease coming up this next year, the rent is going to go up $95 a month. However, independent senior living apartments have income restrictions. Go figure. Rent is more than 50% of my income, leaving payments still due each month for electricity, car insurance, groceries, medicine, gasoline. In fact, it's even gotten to where we residents carpool to go down to the apartment office to pay our rent. Kidding. Okay. I tried to cut down at the grocery store, so I, you know, trying to work to save some money. So, and you know how bananas come in those great big bunches and stuff, and it's always too much and you don't want to eat that much? Well, apparently the store doesn't like it if you cut them in half, so I had to. I thought about passing the hat tonight, but the hat costs too much and the high school wouldn't give me a hat, so I had a few other ideas. I was thinking about having a garage sale, but I don't have a garage, so this is going to be my portable garage sale. Just a moment. No, I don't have puppets down there, but I did bring pops. Okay. Since it is still so hot outside, and this thing better work, I've designed these special fans, only $100 each. Two for $2.50. Will make my rent money. So these are my offerings, and I'll be available to meet with you afterward in the lobby and off camera. For cash only, no refunds or exchanges. This awesome white wire basket, white goes with anything, you know. The original design was not quite as misshapen, I mean, modern looking as it is, but my husband has redesigned it through the power of his electric wheelchair. Crash in the walls, too. I did bring, in case, oh, $100, I mean, $100. I only brought one, so I can't sell you two and make you a deal. I did bring these lovely flowers. They are drought resistant. You guessed it, $100. My husband's had some swelling and, oh dang it, I'm not going to get through my jokes. Okay. Had some swelling in his leg and his foot, so I'm selling his left shoe. Also, $100 each, but don't tell him he thinks he lost it. I also had some socks. These are left foot only. $100. Just a minute. I'm going to make my rent if I get finished. In the same, hold it, hold it, where was I? Oh, here. It's my lovely Booney and Dirk purse. I hear they're cousins of Dooney and Burke, so it's an official, I have it on good authority anyway. And lastly, I have a baseball that was signed by the famous pitcher, Major League, Yogi Bear, and it is $100, too. Again, no refunds. Thank you.
Thank you, Joyce. Yeah, the socks are, socks are, yeah.
Those socks are costing $2.50.
Back in the emergency room?
Yeah.
All right. Next, next speaker we have is Ms. Sonia Callicott. And name and address for the record, please, ma'am.
Hello. My name is Sonia Callicott. I'm 83 years old. I live at Evergreen, Lewisville, at 415 South Garden Ridge, where we're trying to put a no U-turn in front of our entrances. On March 3rd of this year, this may get me, I was involved in a two-car accident. I was turning left and right there, it's two lanes plus the left turn lane going north and also going south. And when you leave Evergreen, there are and also going south, and when you leave Evergreen, a car can be coming into Evergreen and one can be going out, so that's two more cars. And right across, directly across, which causes a lot of problems, is Tom Thumb and Bank of America and Starbucks and a bar and karate and nail place and a lot of other stores. But the main, the worst problem is people take U-turns on Garden Ridge to turn around and go back towards Main Street to turn into McDonald's just before they get to the main entrance on Main Street. It really causes a backup, and the traffic is so bad, and we have some residents in wheelchairs and some in walkers that walk over to Starbucks and McDonald's, even in the dark, I've seen them. It's not a reflector, and I've wanted to go and buy a reflector for them on their wheelchairs. Not too many, but it would only take one, and other residents walk across there. You know, there are no lights, we know that, but if you would just put in a no-U-turn so people would not go into McDonald's, 99 out of 100 cars that I think I see right there doing a U-turn, they're not pulling into our building, which we have to do a left-turn lane, but we don't do a U-turn. I mean, it's holding up traffic so bad, we're just like a half to one block from Main Street and Garden Ridge, and yes, someone said, well, if you put in a no-U-turn, then it would cause more problems at Main Street and Garden Ridge. There are already, it's a very, very busy intersection, and there are red lights and left-turn lanes. We don't have any of that, and it's just, my life has never been the same since my accident. Two cars were totaled, and I was stranded in my car because the woman that hit me, and I did turn left and didn't see her calling, coming because somebody else was turning left facing me, and a car went by, and then another car, and I turned left, and it threw my car up against a big pole, and so I couldn't get, I couldn't open the door. And the passenger side, if anybody had been with me, and it was about 4 o'clock in the afternoon, if anyone had been in my car, they would have died. It knocked my glasses clear off onto the floor. I had on my seatbelts, of course, but it crushed that whole passenger side, and so the car could never be fixed. I had a 2006 Toyota Camry with only 49,000 miles, and the car that I bought is a 2011 Buick with 91,000 miles, and now my insurance is going to go up $200 more a month because I was in an accident. I've never, ever, in the last 17 years, I haven't made a claim or been in an accident, and in the 60-something years I've been driving, I never caused, I never drove or had problems or had a speeding ticket. Got pulled over one time when I was a teenager because we had pipes on our car. They came with the car. It was a used car, but I didn't get a ticket, and I was not racking the truck car. Anyway, it's just getting worse and worse there, and I hesitate pulling out now because sometime I go to the left to go towards South Lake to the doctor or to Irving. I have two eye doctors in Irving. Or sometime I go to the right because I work part-time for a little boy, and I get up at 5:00 a.m., and that's pretty early for an 83-year-old to go to work. I was retired from Verizon since 2006. For three years, I've gotten up at 5:00 in the morning to go and leave my apartment by 6:00. There is no traffic at 6:00 in the morning, so I don't have any problems at all, you know, unless, but, but it's still dark and all, so any help you can give us, because I have, I've seen so many of our residents pushing their little carts and going across, and it's so hard to get across because nobody will stop. People will stop as, like, if I'm turning right, going north on Garden Ridge, going towards Main Street, people will stop, and I will stop to let people coming out of McDonald's to get on, in the lane of traffic, you know, but it is just getting worse and worse and worse.
Thank you.
And so am I, so thank you.
That's your time. No, you're fine. I do understand that staff is continuing to explore some options, so we will, of course, reach out to the community if that happens.
Thank you. If you could just do a survey, I think they did a survey on the deaths, but I don't know that they did a survey on the accidents right there. There are a lot of accidents.
Yes, ma'am.
If we, if we knew if you had done a survey, if not, if you would, it would just be a big help to us.
We'll check with staff to see what information they have.
Okay, thank you.
So, thank you very much. Ms. Sherilyn Cox? And name and address for the record, please.
Hello. My name is Sherilyn Cox. I live at 415 South Garden Ridge Boulevard, apartment 2106, and I've been there since 2000 during the pandemic. I want to say thank you all, hats off for all that you do, for each time that you listen, and then you do what you can do based on what the need is. So I've already spoken with Maryelle about what I'm going to tell you. I'm just saying it because my name was already there, but I already had a conversation with her about it, but I'm just relaying it. I told her my question is, could Louisville, because I don't know, build a complex with a couple of hundred units just for seniors, and Louisville be the landlord at a 30%, 40%, 50% so that those of us that make $17,000, $15,000, 12, I'm not thousand, I'm sorry, 100, could actually live and not have to pay all our money for rent? So that's my question, because I don't know if Louisville can be the landlord and get paid for it, but I spoke with Maryelle, and she's going to work on that.
Absolutely.
So thank you all again for allowing me this opportunity.
You're welcome. Thank you for being here. Carl Kraus?
I got a couple of quick items. Carl Kraus, 2005 P. Month.
Thank you, sir.
First item is, we have skunks in our neighborhood. About two years ago, we had an issue. I was able to live trap four, and my neighbor live-trapped one. At the time, the city was not happy, but they picked them up and carried them out, and, you know, problem solved. Now we have the same basic issue. People have called the city. They don't want anything to do with it. Somebody talked about live-trapping them like we did. They don't want anything to do with that. And, you know, we have one neighbor that has two dogs, and two different nights, each got sprayed. We have cameras all around now, I mean, most people do, and we have raccoons, we have opossum, roof rats and squirrels. All we're asking is to deal with the skunk issue. Now, let me see. You know, they're basically nocturnal animals, but I have a video, if you wanted to see it, of a skunk walking through my front yard at 10:30 in the morning, just sauntering through like they belong there. And, you know, to me, as taxpayers, we shouldn't have to pay somebody or a service, whatever, to get rid of them. There should be an alternative way. I know, I have friends that hunt, and if they see a skunk, they kill it immediately because they're afraid of rabies, because the skunks are very prone to rabies. And fun fact, my son-in-law lives in Plano, or his mother lives in Plano, and she had a dog killed by a bobcat. She contacted the city and asked her, asked them if she could shoot it, and they said, no, you can't, but you can kill it with a bow and arrow. I don't know that you want us going around with bows and arrows killing the skunks, but we need some kind of an answer to that, because no action isn't helping us out at all. So the other issue I have is, I actually brought some handouts just to make it, you know. I'm not taking too much of your time right now.
Thank you, sir.
But it has to do with code enforcement. I call them HOA Louisville. And, you know, I was gigged, I've lived in Louisville 40 years. I've lived in three different houses, and this is the first time I've ever been gigged by Louisville. The first time was a week after I moved in, and then oddly enough, I got gigged again about two, three days after my surgery, about limbs in the front. Well, I have grafted pecan trees, and like, if you go to the city park, the pecan trees are real, the nuts are real small. The ones I grow are real big. I've got some here if you want to look, but anyway, in the fall, you know, the tree limbs get weighed down by the pecans, and once they're harvested, the tree limbs went back up. Well, I had to go out there after I got this tag and try to take care of it myself to clear the sidewalk, which wasn't really that much of an issue. The information I have in here is kind of the back-and-forth email between me and Beth Adams. Now, you know, utility companies, they go through about once a year and clean out branches away from power lines so it doesn't affect people, and that's something that the city needs to start dealing with. I mean, I'm having her come to my house for, you know, a few limbs, but if you look at the last four pages of the paperwork I gave you, you can see throughout the, and this is throughout, I'm sorry, throughout the city, that there's tree limbs that are blocking, you know, power, or I mean, speed limit signs, you can see in that, one of the big green signs and street signs everywhere. And, you know, I get picked on for a few small tree limbs, and the city, needless to say, you know, isn't taking care of things like that. So, you know, I would just like, you know, somebody from the city to deal with the city before they deal with me, because like I tell people, you know, when you're pointing at somebody, you've got three fingers pointing back at you. And as far as code enforcement goes, I'm not real happy with the situation, and I just thought I'd point out to you that there are things that the city needs to take care of for traffic situations.
Sure.
So that's about all I got to say.
I appreciate your time and your feedback. Thank you, Ms. Kraus.
Thank you.
We'll have staff get back with you.
And will I have somebody come back to me on the skunk issue?
Yes, sir.
To let us know what's going on with that?
We will have somebody get back to you on both sets of issues.
Okay, thank you.
You got it, sir. Thank you very much. Appreciate you coming. I do have one e-comment from Gary Ferguson. He wanted to make a couple of comments regarding training police officers regarding handling short-term rental violations, and has a comment on a particular case number. I believe this has been sent over to the PD department, but I'm going to keep a copy here for the city manager as well. Any other comments? Thank you.
Not for visitors' forms, sir.
All right. Moving on. Item E, consent agenda. All the following items on the consent agenda are considered to be self-explanatory by the council and be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless council members, citizens so request. For a citizen to request removal of an item, a speaker card or e-comment must be filled out and submitted to the city secretary. City secretary, do we have any requests for pulling an item?
Yes, sir. We have two requests to repull item 14 from residents.
All right. Thank you, sir. All right. Counsel, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exclusion of item 14.
I move to approve the consent agenda with the exception of item 14.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Counsel, please vote. Motion approved unanimously. Item 14. Item 14 is, I'm going to make sure I got this all right. Item 14, approval of a resolution ratifying the property tax increase reflected in the fiscal year 2024-2025 budget. Section 102-007(c) of the Texas Local Government Code requires a separate vote of the governing body to ratify the property tax increase reflected in the fiscal year 2024-25 budget if the budget will require raising more revenue for property taxes than the previous year. This budget will raise more total property taxes than last year's budget by $6,152,985, and of that amount, $3,296,488 is tax revenue to be raised from new property added to the tax rolls this year. It's recommended that city council approve the resolution as set forth in the caption above. I do have two comments or requests for comment. First is Jamie Williams. And Ms. Williams, if you could state your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Jamie Williams. My address is 706 Red Wing Drive in Louisville, and I think a common thing we've been hearing here tonight is everyone trying to afford and sustain a good quality of life, and this carries through with the same subject here about raising our property taxes. The state of Texas last year raised the homestead exemption, which was a real win for many taxpayers. For the first time in years, I saw my taxes get reduced by $500. I was thrilled about that. Other people had their taxes lowered by more. Going to the next step, last May, we had a ballot where there was not this tax, this tax proposal on the ballot, and in the e-Horizon newsletter, it states that our property taxes will be increased by 7%. Well, when I do the math, the .442, which is really when you do the math, .00432, times each $100,000 of a home value, that's a $422.43 per $100,000 property value. That's a lot. So when I do the math just on my house, say, for example, it's valued at $300,000, that's going to make my taxes go up each year $1,500 approximately. When I do the math and use that total number to the total tax dollar about the increase, that's actually closer to a 22% individual property rate increase, which is unfathomable to me. What I'd like to see is do moving forward is work and work towards efficiencies and reducing costs in our city instead of increasing them, and see where we can cut the budgets, and, and along with that, in the most recent city survey, I would love to see the survey read differently, asking the residents that are taxpayers, what is it that you want from our city? Do we need everything that's in this budget? Because that's just, I mean, I'm a senior citizen now. I'm trying to retire in a couple of years. Right now, I don't think I'll ever see retirement with tax hikes like this, so I really do appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. We will have somebody on staff reach out to you. You'll be glad to know that that number is not at all correct, that you're taking a 72.2% increase from the city budget and turning that into a 7.2% increase on your property. That's not how it's calculated. So be more than happy to have somebody on staff reach out to you, so, because that is not anywhere close to what we're talking about up here, because every one of us up here is a taxpayer as well, and we would not.
I was wondering that.
Yeah, no, ma'am. No, ma'am. But I appreciate you coming here with your concern, so this is not here to point out anything other than we have a lot of people that do have these types of questions, and staff will absolutely work with you to figure out the number. Back of the envelope in our reporting out there is roughly $7 a month for the average $450,000 home is what we're talking about with the tax rate this year. So if that helps any, that's the number that's more realistic of what you should be looking at. So I think we have somebody from staff there to help. But thank you for bringing your concern. It's absolutely, it's a lot of math and a lot of numbers. We spend tens of hundreds of hours trying to get through all of this every year, so I can appreciate how it can get really in the weeds really quickly.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. And I'm sorry, Stacy Jurzak?
I will default, based on what you just explained.
And thank you, and we do have a staff member there to help with you for that, but if you have any questions or concerns on any of this, and I'll leave this open for anybody. It's always tough when we're talking budget, but all of your counsel, we're all residents, we're all neighbors, we're all, we're ideally, you know, we may not be friends, but we're definitely colleagues. We all have really vested interests. We all have a really vested interest in making sure we have a safe and prosperous city. And so you are more than welcome to reach out to any of us. And for that matter, the city staff and the city manager are super approachable in the city as well. So if you have those types of questions, I would highly encourage, instead of going to social media, I'm not, not saying that you are, but sometimes we, we see things on social media that get us spun up and if we talk to the, the lead people, they usually can get us a little bit better information. So, but I appreciate it. It's always a concern. All right. With that, if there are no further public comments, counsel, I'll entertain a motion on item fourteen.
Mr. Mayor, I move to close the public hearing. Is that right?
It's not, yeah, it's not a public hearing, sorry. We just need to move to approve.
Move to approve the resolution ratifying the property tax increase reflected in FY twenty-four, twenty-five operating budget.
A second.
I have a motion and a second. Counsel, if you please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Item F sixteen, regular hearing, consideration of two alternative standards associated with window and awning canopy requirements for retail store or shop on an approximately three-point-two-nine acre lot legally described as Blake C. Bowen Edition Block A Lot Two, located on the north side of Justin Road. FM four oh seven, approximately four hundred feet west of North Simmons Freeway, Zoned Light Industrial District, as requested by Samuel Mortimer, the architect, on behalf of Lewisville four oh seven and thirty-five, the property owner, case number twenty-four dash oh eight dash nine dash ALT STD. Six alternative standards were previously granted relating to the primary pedestrian street and other site features due to significant easement constraints. The two alternative standards requested now are not related to the easement constraints but are due to a new prototype elevation and layout designed for Speck's Wine and Spirits Finer Foods. The two following alternative standards are requested to A, to replace the required forty percent ground floor windows along the primary pedestrian street with twelve percent windows and utilizing a second brick color to mimic the pattern and rhythm of the windows and install a mural on the south wall, and B, to reduce the seventy-five percent canopy coverage along the primary pedestrian street to eighteen percent. Planning and zoning commission recommended unanimous six to nothing approval on January the second, twenty twenty-four, and it's recommended that the city council approve the alternative standard as set forth in the caption above. Michelle Berry, our planning manager, is available for questions. And if there are no comments or questions, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve the two alternate standards as set forth in the caption.
Second. Do we need, do we need to pause, counsel?
No.
No.
I have a motion and a second. Counsel, if you please vote. Motion passes six to nothing. Item seventeen, consideration of an ordinance to the city council of the city of Lewisville, Texas approving a negotiated settlement between the Atmos City Steering Committee, ACSC, and Atmos Energy Corporation Mid-Tex Division regarding the company's twenty-twenty-four rate review mechanism filing declaring existing rates to be unreasonable, adopting tariffs that reflect rate adjustment consistent with the negotiated settlement, finding the rates to be set by the attached settlement tariffs to be just and reasonable and in the public interest, appointing an attachment, approving an attachment establishing a benchmark for pensions and retiring medical benefits requiring the company to reimburse ACSC's reasonable rate-making expenses, determining that this ordinance was passed in accordance with the requirements of Texas Open Meetings Act, adopt savings clause declaring an effective date and requiring delivery of this ordinance to the company and the ACSC's legal counsel and declaring an emergency. In two thousand and seven, the Atmos City Steering Committee and Atmos Energy Corporation's Mid-Tex Division settled a rate adjustment issue under the gas-reliable infrastructure program by establishing a new rate review mechanism. This mechanism replaced the GRIP filings for future rate reviews. Most recent RRM tariff adopted in two thousand and eighteen was used when Atmos Mid-Tex filed a rate request on April first, two thousand and twenty-four. The company sought nine, one hundred ninety-six point eight million in additional revenues based on a two thousand and twenty-three cost of service study. Applying ACSC's RRM standards adjusted this to one hundred eighty-two point five million with one hundred thirty-two point six million affecting ACSC members. After analysis, ACSC's consultants determined that a one hundred and forty-nine point six million dollar shortfall. The parties eventually settled on a one hundred and sixty-four point seven million, a thirty-two point one million reduction from the initial request, which includes covering ACSC's expenses. New rates will take effect on October first, two thousand and twenty-four. It is recommended that the city council approve the ordinance as set forth by the city manager or her designee to execute the ordinance as set forth in the caption above. And counsel, if there are no comments or questions, I will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. City attorney?
This is an ordinance of the city council of the city of Lewisville, Texas approving a negotiated settlement between the Atmos City Steering Committee and Atmos Energy Corp. Mid-Tex Division regarding the company's two thousand twenty-four rate review mechanism filing declaring existing rates to be unreasonable, adopting tariffs that reflect rate adjustments consistent with the negotiated settlement, finding that the rates to be set by the attached settlement tariffs to be just and reasonable and in the public interest, approving an attachment establishing a benchmark for pensions and retiree medical benefits, requiring the company to reimburse ACSC's reasonable rate-making expenses, determining that this ordinance was passed in accordance with the requirements of the Texas Open Meetings Act, adopting the savings clause declaring an effective date and requiring delivery of this ordinance to the company and the ACSC's legal counsel and declaring an emergency.
Counsel, if you please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Item G, reports. Reports about items of community interest regarding which no action will be taken. Councilmember Green?
Oh, I was just going to mention that we do have PBR coming up this weekend and have a really fun parade on Saturday followed up by the event Saturday night. I think we've also got an event on Friday night. And also just wanted to remind everybody that the animal shelter is still really full. So there's still a lot of really lovely new family members waiting there for you.
Councilmember Jones?
No report.
Councilmember Kate?
No report.
Councilmember Meredith?
Yes, I have some library activities for the week. Cookbook swap drop-off through Friday, September twentieth, second floor, adult services desk. Drop off to five cookbooks at the second floor, adult services desk anytime while the library is open from Monday, September ninth through Friday, September twentieth. The drop by on, and then drop by on Saturday, September twenty-first to pick up new-to-you cookbooks. Participants will be able to cook up as many cookbooks as they donate. I'm hoping someone in my family just drops off. Resumes with Renee for adults, Thursday, September twelfth, six to seven P. M., small conference room, no registration required. Adult coloring afternoon for adults, Friday, September thirteenth, two to four thirty, Crawford Meeting Room, no registration is required. That's all I've got.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Troyer?
Yes, Mayor. I have a number of items for the Lewisville Grand Theater. And I will warn you ahead of time, a lot of these, there are a lot of names in here that are, I will probably butcher. So I apologize in advance. First of all, some performances going on at the Grand Theater. Proko Fief's Piano Concerto Number, and there's no number, featuring Jian Leon Kian, presented by the Lewisville Lake Symphony. That's on September thirteenth. A Whale of a Band concert presented by Metropolitan Winds on September fourteenth. Elvis Gospel and Beyond presented by Stardom Entertainment, September fifteenth. Roald Dahl's Matilda, the musical, presented by Liberty Christian Upper School Theater Department, September nineteenth and twentieth. Conexións Culturalis in the Heights presented by the city of Lewisville on September twenty-ninth. And as always, acoustic jam sessions presented by the Visual Art League of Lewisville every Friday night, six to nine at the theater. And activities, there is an art talk, Copyright Secrets for the Visual Artist presented by the Visual Art League of Lewisville on September tenth. And then exhibitions, Sacred Lands of American Indians, paintings by Francesca Diatria Romano presented by the city of Lewisville through October fifth. Poliscard Salon, works by Alfred Gianferani, presented by the city of Lewisville, September tenth through the twenty-eighth. Fresh Ideas, twenty-twenty-three winner Ariel Bowman, Lap of Luxury, presented by the Visual Art League of Lewisville through September fourteenth. And finally, Patterns and Textures presented by the Visual Art League of Lewisville through September fourteenth. And that's all.
Thank you, sir. City attorney? City secretary?
No report, Mayor.
The planning department and neighborhood services have worked on a backyard design competition that is funded through a grant from the AARP and that is open and information is available on our website.
Thank you very much. That's, which is a great program, by the way. It's one of the many things that we're doing to work on affordability in housing, so backyard cottages. If you go onto the city website, you can find that information. But you can also read our Uniform Development Code and see about different ways to maybe utilize your property differently based on some new rules that we've created over the last year.
It's a quick read.
Lake level report, Mayor. Lewisville Lake is currently at ninety-six percent capacity with a lake level of five-hundred-and-twenty-one point one six feet, just not quite a, not quite a foot shy from that conservation level.
Thank you.
No report, Mayor.
Chief?
Chief?
A real quick note about the western days coming up on the twenty-seventh, twenty-eighth. Very excited about that. And for those that are harboring a grudge about the, the tax increase we just did, we're going to be in a dunk tank. So you get a chance to come out and take out some frustrations. I think a lot of council will be in the dunk tank on Friday, I believe, tomorrow morning, right? Friday?
I don't, do I? I haven't seen the schedule.
Oh, okay. I think it's Friday. I'm sure it's Friday. Okay. Anyway, hope to see everybody out there. Thank you.
All right. So just to give you guys an update, city manager, have you got anything before I wander into this?
No, that's fine.
Okay. You sure?
Yep.
Okay. So this month is, Nash, the North Texas Food Bank is doing a food drive for peanut butter and it's a mayor's challenge. And I was having breakfast with one of our other mayors, Tiffany. I was having breakfast at Tiffany's and she and I were talking about some different ways that we might go about this. But we both thought that we remembered that about this time of year was, it was the time for the peanut butter drive. We didn't know if it was smooth peanut butter or crunchy, but we both kind of liked them, so it didn't really matter. And she and I are both competing on that. So it's one thing we've got going for us. But this year, we want to make sure that Lewisville is well represented in the peanut butter drive and I will be putting up a donation page on my city website for Facebook so you can either donate cash or materials, so whatever type of peanut butter you want at that. We, you can also bring peanut butter here to city hall. We're going to put a spot over in the mayor, or the city manager's office. So if you guys are at the grocery anytime between now and the end of September and feel so inclined to help Lewisville win the challenge, please bring your peanut butter or your cash. Thank you very much.
Have you approached our factory?
Disappoint a clarification. Councilwoman Green wants to know, you had breakfast where?
At Tiffany's.
What, what, what about that?
That just tickled her.
Well, you know, it's just a name.
Well, I did want to add, because this does seem to be the season of giving and competition, is that we are going to be going live on United Ways fundraising for Pie in the Face tomorrow. And that means all of the council members up here have agreed to be part of that, which means you could put money on any of them to throw a pie in their face. The top three raising money will get the pies in the face. We have a special call meeting.
Three? How do we put the top one?
No, it's three.
Three.
And we will have a special call meeting to actually throw those pies in your face. So it will not be me. We will have a neutral party.
Why do you have to be?
Because I'm afraid she's going to hurt me.
So how do we, how do we donate for that? Is there a website or something coming up?
We will be sending you guys a QR code and some, we'll be starting to do social media push tomorrow.
All right. Well, it's that time of year, so good times. All right. With that, we're going to move back into closed session in accordance with Texas Government Code, Subchapter D, Section five fifty-one point oh seven one, consultation with attorney. Legal issues regarding the Texas-New Mexico Power Company's application for approval of system resiliency plan filed to the PUC of Texas, docket number five six nine five four, Section five fifty-one point oh seven one, consultation with attorney. Legal issues related to Fair Housing Act, Section five fifty-one point oh seven two, real estate property acquisition. We don't need that one anymore. Yep, I didn't think so. And five fifty-one point oh eight seven, economic development deliberation regarding economic development negotiations, also Section five fifty-one point oh seven four, personnel with the following personnel of city manager Claire Powell, city secretary Thomas Harris III, city attorney Elizabeth Plaster, and municipal judge Brian Holman. We reserve the right to adjourn in closed session anytime during the course of the meeting, discuss any matters listed above as authorized by Texas Government Code, Section five fifty-one point oh seven one, five fifty-one oh seven two, five fifty-one oh seven three, five fifty-one oh seven four, five fifty-one oh seven six, and five fifty-one point oh eight seven. Speaker? There we go. We're going to reconvene back into regular session. City council, is there any action to be taken?
Mayor, I move to ratify the city attorney's authorization to intervene on the city's behalf in the proceeding involving Texas-New Mexico Power Company's application for approval of a system resiliency plan filed at the Public Utility Commission of Texas, docket number five six nine five four.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Counsel, any other action?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, I move that effective immediately, the city secretary shall be under the direction and supervision of the city manager or her designee. The city secretary shall be responsible to the city manager or her designee for the administration of the city's secretary department. The city secretary shall prepare such reports and recommendations concerning the city secretary department when requested by the city manager or her designee and shall perform such other duties as may be assigned from time to time by the city manager or her designee.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes have it, unanimous. As there is no further action to be taken in tonight's city council meeting, we stand adjourned. It is eleven thirty-two.